Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if y'all would come in and find a seat, squeeze together, get close. We are going to actually, the first presentation may take care of a couple of these folks here, but, but the first item on the agenda is a presentation of the Texas Historical Commission Distinguished Service Award for 2021 to the Medina County Historic Commission. Would y'all please come up and join us? Just stand right here while we move this out of the way, because this Perkies likes to have all the photo moments perfect. Thank you. So, thank you very much. So, these folks and many others are part of Medina County Historic Commission, and every year that I've been here, they're recognized for the work they do for the Historic Commission of Medina County by the state of Texas, and this year is no different. They have the 2021 Distinguished Service Award presented to the Medina County Historic Commission in recognition of its active and well-balanced preservation program. Thank y'all for everything y'all do, and I'm gonna hand that to you.
You can't see me, I can't see you.
All right.
I'm going to take two pictures, Judge, and Ms. Dax asks if I could take one with her camera.
You know, that's because she's my neighbor. We see each other almost daily. Is this a little like a neighbor-y all the time?
Well, I'm sure that's a pleasant experience for both of you. Was that nipple, man?
Is that, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now, I'll take the other one.
Now, you look over there, too.
Oh, yeah.
He's snapping away.
I just click that little camera thing when I take pictures.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker, did you get the picture?
Yes.
Are you gonna post this from the 270 neighborhood?
I'm wanting to send partial pictures, so there's a reason for that.
Can we go look at it?
No, because I didn't know what.
You wanna turn it up, right?
Do I be able to turn my phone?
You can do it my phone.
Okay, I think I've got it. There's just some lighting from the movie.
Oh, yeah, I think it...
But I think it ignores that.
It has.
I need to make changes. Okay, I took that one.
Hey, thank y'all again very much, I appreciate it.
I'll say, I was gonna say, we only get this award in part because of the support that Commissioners Court gives to the Medina County Historic Commission. We would not be able to exist without financial and just overall support, so we appreciate that.
Thank y'all for voting.
Thank you again.
Appreciate it.
Thank you also much.
You bet.
Thank you.
That's from the mine, isn't it, right?
That's on it. That's at the mine, they got more of it there.
By the way, while they're finishing this up for you all, if you go to the Hondo Airport where the last projects, the Historic Commission did, it's a museum inside the airport related to the airport, going back to World War II and III war. And last Sunday, we just had a dedication of an Army, World War II Army uniform that was Mr. Keith's, Martha's father's uniform, and it's there on the mat. But there's also a lot of other artifacts that relate to the construction of the airport and the mission that they did during the war.
And you can see it in the Hondo.
And you see it in the Hondo. So if you wanna go see it.
But if the Devine paper wants to put it in there, we can see it there, too, right? Just, I wanna put that plug in for you, you know, make sure you get it done. All right, we're gonna move on to the next item. We have, thank y'all very much. We have a large agenda today, so, next one is Discuss Take Possible Action on Resolute and Authorize the County to Enter into a Maintenance Agreement with the Developer of Amanda Park Residential Subdivision and Other Matters in Connection There With. Mr. Juarez, come on up.
Yes, sir. Want to stand in a particular place?
They'll bring it back over to you.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, I'm a new face here, I'm an attorney who worked for Clay Benford, I'm hearing his stead. Been wanting to do the work on this transaction. The item is pretty self-explanatory, all we're doing here is authorizing the county to enter into a maintenance agreement with the developer of Amanda Park so that the maintenance obligation related to the road improvements and the storm drainage improvements are passed on to the residents of that Owners Association instead of the greater population of the county.
Perfect.
Okay, yeah, we've been working on this, and I think we really need to get this document and use it on all of our agreements. If we don't have a pit in place, it's actually gonna be a county road, but they are going to maintain it fully. Is that my understanding?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And we have been working on this for probably about eight or nine months. It's a very well-put-together document. I went over it with Clay Benford. And like I say, as far as the rest of the county, we are doing a whole lot more of non... We can't take up, the amount of road people we got coming in, we can't handle the roads no more. It's just astronomical cost of what it's gonna cost to do these roads. And this here will pass the cost on to the people moving here to take care of their own roads, streets, and drainage. And I would like to have this one copy, and we'll just use it throughout the county if y'all wanna read it, but it'll fit, if they wanna keep them county roads, they still gotta maintain them.
Where's the Amanda Park?
Oh, okay, that's 381 Petranco Road, across the street from Petranco Road Elementary. It's gonna be 240 townhomes selling, it's the way I understood it, sold to all to one investor out of California bought them. But anyhow, thank you for putting this together and bringing it to the Commissioner's Court, and I will make a motion that we pass the resolution authorizing the county to enter into a maintenance agreement with the developer of Amanda Park Residential Subdivision.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion?
There's been a lot of public discussion at this time, I just wanna ask a simple question. If the cost being passed on to the people who are moving into the area to take care of the roads, are they now gonna have their tax removed?
No, they will not. The way we do on all these roads, Precinct Two, and I'll get to that in a minute, has paved every single road that was unpaved. We are going back now and will repave those. These people can live in a community where they, neighbors said, well, don't go down there, get into their house, it's a chug hole, you're not gonna find that in Precinct Two, but the roads are fixed. And the ones that were bad are getting better. So, yes, they, they will, they came here on their dime, they're gonna pay for their improvements themselves.
So not only...
I'm not passing it on you, him, or anybody else in this room.
What I'm saying is that they're, they're taking their own.
Exactly.
But they're also taking everybody else's.
Their, their tax rate will not change.
No.
But when they, when they buy a house in that subdivision, they know that this agreement's in place, just like when, when we do the assessment for PIDs in all the other subdivisions, those people buy knowing that they're gonna pay an additional assessment to live there. If they don't wanna do that, then they don't buy. They can go somewhere else.
I've got one question about the agreement. Does this, this have to do with homeowners associations only, subdivisions that don't have them?
It's just the particular homeowners association that overlaid the Amanda Park subdivision.
Okay.
But the answer to the guess, they'll still pay, they'll still pay road taxes, they'll still pay the rest of the tax. But I can assure you, the roads going to these new homes are brand new. You don't have to go through chug holes no more, and they're getting better and better and better weekly.
And that's due to your extra special road tax.
We have a motion, and we have a second, right? Anybody else? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have discuss, thank you very much, Mr. Juarez.
Thank you.
Discuss Take Possible Action Order Approving a 2022-2023 Annual Service Plan Update for the Woodlands Public Improvement District. Are you here for that?
Yes, sir.
Please tell us who you are.
My name is Abdi Esteen with MUCAP, we're the Woodlands Public Improvement District Administrators for the County, Commissioners. This item that we've presented before you is a requirement of the Texas Department of the Government that governs public improvement districts. The original governing document for the pit that was approved back in 2021 when the bonds were issued is required to update each year by law, and that update is something that we've actually calculated, kind of prepared and presented for your consideration. This is the second annual update that we've prepared for this bid. And what it does is basically affirm or update the budget for the improvement district. So, in summary, that we've kind of prepared and sent to you all, we've shown that the budget for the public improvements that are to be financed with the pit has not changed since the inception, so the budget remains the same. And according to the developer, they are on schedule to complete the public improvements by second or third quarter of 2023, and by then they should be able to start some vertical construction. So, everything looks to be moving forward as planned. One of the things this annual update does is calculate a budget for the public improvement district, so we would need to collect about $929,194 from the, one of the improvement areas in the pit, and that would be used to pay the debt service on the bonds and district administration. We will also need to collect another $31,000 from the second improvement area in the district, total amount of $31,000 to pay for district administration. So, that, and this amount will all be paid by developers, since they are the sole owners of property within the district, so no single resident's property owner will be impacted by this assessment. It will all be collected from the property owner.
Perfect.
Hopefully, you'll have a chance to look at the update. Like I said, this is more of a housekeeping annual requirement by statute, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Anybody?
I've been working with his team on this.
Okay, you have a motion?
I got the motion, we approve the 2223 Annual Service Plan Update for the Woodland Park.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
We're gonna move item number 43 up. Judge Kendrick is here, and I wanna get him back to court as fast as I can, so, but item 43 is Discuss Take Possible Action Approving Approval of Increase in the Hourly Rate for Court Appointed Attorneys for CPS Child Protective Services Cases.
All right, yes, thank you. We'd like to raise the rate for our court-appointed attorneys that handle our CPS cases to $90 an hour. As far as I know, that I can tell, their set rate, which is currently around $15 an hour, hasn't been changed in years. It certainly was in place when I took, took the office, and these attorneys are very dedicated, they handle some of the most important cases in Medina County, they do a fantastic job, and we need to compensate them as close to what they deserve as we can, and moving it to $90 an hour is gonna get us close to that mark. I said, they do a tremendous job on some of the most important cases we have in Medina County, they're very dedicated, and I would like to raise their court-appointed fees to $90 an hour.
And our budget is set to do that.
The budget is...
The budget's fine, we're set to do that.
I will make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Judge.
Thank you so much, may I be excused?
Yes, you may be, thank you.
Thank you, have fun.
Next, we have Discuss Take Possible Action on Final Approval of the, to the following unit, Petranco Subdivision located Precinct Two off Petranco Road, Units Four and Six. We're tabling it?
Yes.
You could've told me that before I read it.
Uh huh.
You know?
Yeah, good thing it wasn't mine.
So, all right, next, we have Discuss Take Possible Action on Release of Maintenance Bonds, and it's for Petranco Oak Subdivision Unit Number Seven.
I was in that subdivision active yesterday, and everything looks good to go. We are installing a few stop signs in the area that are on the county main roadway, but I will make that motion to accept it.
Motion in two seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have Discuss Take Possible Action on Preliminary Approval of Vacate and Replat of Lots 10, 11, and 12 of Redbird Ranch Phase Two. Payton Dawson?
Yes.
Come on up. Payton Dawson.
Yes, sir.
Wishful thinking, right?
Exactly.
All right.
My name's Hayden Foltz, I'm with Payton Dawson Engineering. This is just a replat of three lots, and it's Form Two. They still meet the number requirements of our agreement. These lots actually had some extra depth, or extra width originally, there was a field issue, and we need to, this is to correct that.
Yeah, is this in the new part of Summit? Summit of Redbird?
Yes, this is in Phase Two.
Okay, yeah.
So the back portion, and it's, it's a...
Yeah, are y'all cranking up back in there again? Because I know you are shut down for a while.
Yes, they are.
Okay.
We actually went...
I will make that motion to go ahead and accept the preliminary approval for vacate and replat on the lots 10, 11, and 12.
Second.
Look like they have the drainage issue in them.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Discuss Take Possible Action on Final Approval of Vacate and Replat of Lots 35A and 36 Mountain Valley Ranch Subdivision, located Precinct One off of Private Road 2533. Who is here for that?
I'm here.
Do you, are you good with it?
Yeah, they tuned it to one, so I'll make the motion, we get final approval.
Good enough, I'll second that.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have Discuss Take Possible Action on Final Approval of Oak Meadows Subdivision, Phase Two, located Precinct Four off of County Road 7755. Mr. Howard?
Good morning.
Welcome here.
How are you all this morning? Good. Here to ask for final approval on Oak Meadows, Phase Two, 14 lots, water well and septic systems, County Road.
Is this a private road subdivision?
No.
No? Okay.
We, we were waiting on the maintenance bond from Boquay.
I have the maintenance bond here.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all we were waiting on.
Okay.
I made the motion to be a final approval on received maintenance bond.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next, we have Discuss Take Possible Action on Preliminary Approval of Vacate and Replat of Portion of Block 25, Block Six, San Antonio Trust Subdivision.
Yes, and I can bring Judge in here. This is a, I've entered track within the San Antonio Trust Subdivision. It's the owner, owns this, this tract of land, and he would like to sell, sell the property, and he's having a hard time selling it as one, so he decided to split it in half. Both tracks have septic, water meters, all electrics, everything they need, so, there's no problems. We're just seeking for the preliminary approval right now, so replat.
I just wanted to ask a question, I had, I just seen, they both have these new water circuits? Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yes.
You can get no more money out of Bruce.
Well, what I wanna do is, because they keep you with what we've been doing, I just wanna make sure that they have the services before you even file.
Yes, they do, I spoke with, yes.
You have like 7,000 meters, you don't know where they're all at?
Sorry, I tried, I know we're 6,900.
Okay.
The water was the only question I had, and that was cleared up by Ms. Wells this morning, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept preliminary approval to vacate and replat this Portion of Block 25.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Ms. Wells.
Thank you.
Next, we have Discuss Take Possible Action on Approval of Task Order for Professional Services from Westwood Professional Services for the Development of a FEMA, FMA, application for a countywide drainage plan, and we have a presentation, too?
Uh, yes, sir.
So, just to give you a preface, David and I met with these gentlemen, and Keith, and Pat Bronner, I don't know, what day, last week, someday?
Last week.
Last week, one day. So, the next two items, they're gonna cover both of them. Once, once we're countywide, and actually, what we talked about yesterday in the meeting, the second one is for the Henness specific, so, take off on the first one.
Thank you, Judge. So, as Judge was saying last week, our team met with Judge, Mr. Lynch, incoming judge, and County Bloodplane Administrator, Grand Administrator, to discuss the imminent release of federal funding opportunities for flood mitigation projects. So, we discussed two opportunities, the first one being the development of an application for the FEMA FMA Capability and Capacity Building Grants. And so, this grant will provide 90% federal share with a maximum award of $900,000 to develop a countywide master drainage plan. So, if awarded the grant, the county would be able to develop a plan to evaluate flood risk across the entire county, develop projects, cost share strategies, and enhance local criteria to reduce flood risk for existing communities. The county will be competitive in this grant, given its ranking by the Federal Vulnerability Score, its partnership in CTP State, and the number of structures identified as regulatory floodplain in the county. The grant's period, if you can go to the next slide, opens September 30th, and will require its first and middle to the Texas Water Development Board December 5th. Our team is currently working in contact with the Water Development Board, we have weekly meetings scheduled with them for some other jurisdictions we're working with, and we're doing that through the end of the application period. So, if approved by Commissioners Court today, we will continue the process and continue coordination with TWDB, the T-DIM, and Center of River Authority, and other entities required to finish this grant.
Is that it?
That's it on this one.
Okay, it costs $20,000, right?
Yes, sir.
If we, we pay $20,000 for them to develop it, we can receive up to $900,000, of which we do a 10% match of whatever we receive on, on grants for floods, but we can't apply for the grants until...
Ms. Wells.
We have the study done, and, and so...
It's the grant application that costs $20,000.
Yes, sir.
And if we are awarded the money, that cost can be covered also by the grant receipts.
Yes, all pre-award management costs or consulting costs will be reimbursed if awarded.
And you feel like our odds of being awarded are very good.
So, so last year, there was 125 million that the federal government distributed, and there weren't enough applications to give out the 125 million. This year, it was 800 million, and the Texas Water Development Board has gotten about the same response as they did last year. They had 12 applications go through last year, and none of them were approved. So, I think, as I said, with, with the Federal Vulnerability Score from Medina County, the number of structures in the floodplain, and our work with the TWDB, I, I feel pretty confident about it.
It sounds like an old brayer. Bruce is sitting there going, money. Uh huh, I, I can see your face. I know what you're talking about.
See, we got a lot of backward areas, but, you know, when it's raining, you got water all over the place.
David had a whole town.
David's got a whole town.
And my suggestion for you, based on the conversation we had, was it yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, we met with one of the cities in Medina County who actually asked the question, do we have a floodplain plan for the whole county? Because he would like to join in with us, and you, we may wanna reach out to all the cities and, and, and have them a part of this, if y'all wouldn't mind, we'll get the marriage involved and, and whoever else, but it was the city of Hondo, Commissioner Newman's got the contact over there, and I would suggest we talk to the other five cities also, just to get them in.
And I wanna add, so, if this grant is awarded, it's basically gonna be a plan where we can come up with projects, costs, and set yourself up for the next round of grants to where you can get those projects funded. And so, that is what this plan would do. So, any major low-water crossings where you want, you know, emergency sensors, or they need to be, you know, raised with some additional culverts, or you have a repetitive loss at, you know, residential neighborhoods, you'd be able to identify those projects, the costs associated with them, the benefit costs, to where the next round, you can come up with money to fund those projects.
Perfect. Ma'am, you had a question? And please identify yourself.
Excuse my name, it's Amber Klafter.
So she had it written down in there. Okay, go ahead.
And I am, I am asking about, where can I find the published stipulations of the acceptance of this, this grant? Because money is never free, it always comes with stipulations. Where can I find the publication?
You can look at the FEMA FMA NOFO, and it has the published stipulations on there. It's a notice of funding opportunity.
Okay.
It's about, I think about 100-page document.
He said MOF.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, has anybody reviewed by, whether they're on the board? Has anybody, have any of the Commissioners or the Judge reviewed the stipulations of the acceptance of the grant?
We have met with these gentlemen who are going to be applying for us, and have we specifically? No. But, once we get to that part of it, we obviously will want to go ahead and review all those.
Okay, so we just wanna make sure that we know what the stipulations are before we accept the grant.
We will definitely know what they are before we accept the grant, yes.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I would...
Go ahead, tell us who you are.
Leonard Dawson from Del Monte Vine. I'm just asking a silly question, will this cover all the county?
Yes, sir.
If you cross the creek, no.
Sorry. We have lived in the vine, and they have a floodplain, we lived there for 25-plus years, suddenly, when a new floodplain came out, we got engulfed in a flood area with half the vine, and naturally, we're stuck, we're paying a tremendous lot more money for flood insurance, and so, they claimed it was empty because they ran out of money, the potential thickness line of water rise to make a big lake, just so they ran out of money. So, I appreciate it, came over there and kind of make sure we're not...
They will. Anybody on the other side of the Divine Creek gets counted, okay?
I've, I've met with these gentlemen before, we discussed some of the...
I just wanna make sure we get all the way over there, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the task order for Professional Services from Westwood Professional Services for the Development of FEMA FMA Application.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have Discuss Take Possible Action on Approval of Task Order for Professional Services from Westwood Professional Services for the Development of a FEMA FMA Application for Flood Mitigation Project.
Okay, Judge, all right, this is the second opportunity to be discussed, it's for the FEMA FMA Localized Flood Risk Reduction Project Grant. This grant with funds would provide 90% federal share with a maximum award of several million toward the engineering, management, and construction costs associated with the Henness Flood Mitigation Project. So, this project was developed in 2011 as part of a TWDB grants obtained by the county. There are several hundred properties in the Henness within the 100-year floodplain from Seco Creek and its tributaries. The grant application will require an analysis of the cost due to inflation since 2011, revisions to the benefit cost analysis, coordination with local, federal, and state entities, exhibit and error preparation, and data collection. Could you go to the next slide, Jennifer? That's just, so this is just a snippet from that project, and so, the preferred action plan, based on our meeting that we discussed last week, is to identify those cost estimates, identify the affected property owners of this project, hold a public meeting with the Henness Lions Club, and after this meeting, we can continue the application unless broad pushback is perceived at the meeting. The county will be competitive for this grant due to the sheer number of structures in the floodplain in the Henness, and also because of the benefit cost of the project from the preliminary analysis, and then, again, the county's federal vulnerabilities for. So, if approved today, we'll continue the application, continue the coordination with Texas Water Development Board. And again, on this one, all management costs, pre-award costs, will be reimbursed upon award.
Do you have a picture of the before and after, if I have a chance?
Yeah, actually, so if you see the, the brown dashed line on, on, on this sheet here, that is the 50-year floodplain, and the blue would be the proposed floodplain post-mitigation. So, if you see, you know, the, the area, you know, the dense area off Highway 90 there, that area would be mitigated from the 50-year, and the 100-year would also be significantly reduced.
The prior photo that we saw actually has all that downtown area in it, right?
Yes. So, yeah, if you go to the next, come down one more, okay. So, yeah, that is the regulatory floodplain, so if you notice in between the two red lines on Highway 90, all the smaller parcels, those are all inundated and subject to having to take flood insurance.
Go back to the other one again, please. If you look at, yes, if you look at the, the markings on here, the yellow there on Highway 90, the red, and the green to the far right, those are proposals that were made by half the red, and the green to the far right, those are proposals that were made by half and associates back in two thousand and eleven to mitigate some of the flooding. They were cost prohibitive at the time, all, we did manage to put up some, some
Early warning.
early warning systems north of town in Seco, and I think Parker Creek also, to, just to let people know, that was, that was something that we could afford at the time. These others were cost prohibitive, but now with the ninety percent funding, they may make them very well be, to be built, which would decrease the flooding in the downtown area considerably.
They'll take it completely out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this application costs
This is forty thousand.
This is forty thousand with the same, same stipulations.
Yes.
Um, if, if we get, if we are approved, and I think doing these projects is going to be contingent upon the landowners where these penciled markings are, being agreeable to us hiring people to go in there and actually do the work that's required. Pat Broner informed us in two thousand and eleven, there was not any agreeable landowners that wanted that to happen. So we're hoping for better results this time, and maybe show them the benefits of what, what it'll do to affect the flooding in town.
Help me remember what we talked about in the meeting the other day, but if, if we're approving this today because we're on a, a short deadline. But if the Dehennas people, y'all are going to go out and have a meeting with the people in Dehennas, and, and if we get nothing from them, then we're not going to do it. Right? It won't cost us anything, but, but because of the timeframe, and, and, and we needed to get it in this court now, so we can move forward, then it's going to be up to these guys to go to the Dehennas Lions Club, no, I'm just kidding, but whoever owns over there,
Well, it's gonna
and get them to approve their work, otherwise this deal's dead.
Getting buy-in from the, from the populace is important, but it's going to basically come down specifically to the place where this work is going to be done.
Yes, sir.
And if those landowners are agreeable, then we move forward, if they're not, then
And I want to add, if the grant is awarded, and we go through the preliminary phases of design, and we can't get the community to buy off on the project, the, everything that we, we did here will be reimbursed, and everything that we do up until that point will be reimbursed. So if there is, we, we can't get community buy-off on the actual project, whenever after grant is awarded, they will award you up to the phase that you get to.
Okay. If we stop the process before the grant is awarded, because of negative kickback, then we're going to be liable for the work that you've done up to that point
Yes, sir.
from the counties.
Yes, sir.
But, but the first thing we're going to do is meet with them.
Yes, sir.
And have a good feel of whether we even proceed.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we approve this task order for professional services also for the development of the county-wide grant plan.
No, it's
No, no, I'm sorry.
Flood mitigation.
Flood mitigation.
Motion in a second, any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am?
I would just like to ask what the amount of the money, this Amber Clausner again, the amount of the money that the county is in for at this point of what you've done so far?
Zero.
So zero at this point?
Zero at this point. Zero up until the first meeting, they're, they've agreed to have a meeting in Dehennas to talk about it. If, if there are nobody interested, then, then it's still zero. If people in Dehennas want to do it, then the forty-five thousand will start kicking in, correct?
And that will be reimbursed.
And that will be reimbursed in a grant if we get a grant, which, because of Dehennas' flood problems, very likely, we will get a grant.
Yes, sir, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Next, we have to discuss a possible action on setting elected official salaries for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. You all got it here in front of you?
I've got one correction.
Yes.
While you're looking at it. Precinct three, Commissioner's travel expenses is, was supposed to be, you probably misunderstand, twelve thousand also.
Okay.
Instead of fourteen.
So you want to make that motion with that correction?
I will make that motion that we set the elected official salaries with that correction.
Second.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. So next, we're going to have a public hearing to receive comment regarding the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three Medina County budget. And, and I have some people that have signed up for different items, but just for the public to know, this is a public hearing. Anybody can talk, it's a public hearing. So we are opening up the public hearing right now for the, for the budget. And then we're going to have another period, public hearing for tax rate, and another public hearing for the precinct two tax rate. So right now, we're on opening public hearing, anybody? Okay.
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not familiar with how this works, so I don't know when I, when, I just wanted to
Go ahead. Say it again.
Leonard Dossi.
Okay.
Uh, I'm just here, at what point you let me know when to speak, but it's just on behalf of taxpayers who have kind of voiced to me and some of my feelings enough with higher taxes. And so you just let me know when I can voice them on that, when it's two, three hours.
Probably going to be under the tax rate. Does that sound good?
If I need my
Okay. So do I have a motion? Or let's go ahead and close the public hearing? We're going to go to the next item, which is discuss take possible action on adoption of the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three Medina County budget.
I made the motion to adopt the twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion passed, it's three to one. Next, we have to discuss and take possible action. Oh, next, we're going to have a public hearing to receive comment regarding the Medina County twenty-two tax rate. Mr. Dossi, and just so you know, the tax rate for twenty-two, twenty-three for everything is point four seven four three, that includes road and bridge, debt rate, and general fund. And that is reduced from last year's tax rate was point five two two three. So it went down about four and a half cents per hundred from last year to this year. And, and public hearing, so we're open.
Well, I was reading, it almost looks like there was another hundred or so that was going to be cycled back around. And then my question always comes back, it seems simple to see that in a paper and kind of swallow it, but there are other taxing entities that everyone out here lives under. And when we say value jumps up fifty percent, that's for this entity, but it also goes to the buyer, city, school, am I, am I wrong?
No, you're correct.
Okay.
There's about six different entities.
Sometimes the numbers get being a little deceptive, and at the bottom line, I find myself in over my head, and I passed it, by the way, and I sent a text out to about a hundred, hundred and ten people, had about a fifteen, twenty percent response when I said I was coming, just my term was enough. And so I was kind of coming to just voice mine, because we had my wife and myself come over just that's my wife over at the courtside, and that wasn't for sympathy, yes.
Sure.
But we had, I mean, it, it seemed like we hadn't even made our home, but the papers in the file were arguing with a board over the tax values. And I look in the paper, we're already looking for ways to find more money. And at least for me, my commenter, I don't like being crude as a pastor, but I have talked to some people, and I go, where, where, where did everybody have their head buried throughout COVID, inflation, interest rates, and all the other stuff that the average person has? Most of them don't have what would be six and seven-digit figures, I deal with. They're more like ten thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars. And every time we come at things like this, the food lines have gotten longer. Again, I see them over there, like, food lines, food pantry, salvation army depleted, orbit all of them. And I'm just asking, again, mine is enough. And I, and the way I presented to the gentleman and the, the lady there on that board was, you just give me a number of how many people need to come and be present to get somebody's attention. Because I started with a few texts, but you know, I have been in a school board, I, I know people that are just like, if you give me a number of what it would be to get a, a, a response and at least sensitive taxpayer, if y'all had a number, I'd appreciate it, because I, I'll work to bring that number over to let you see them. But that's really, I think, all I have, I, I didn't know what to say or do, but it basically is, I don't know how to even start the enough movement to, to, to just see what we do. There's a lot of people out here hurting.
I'll sit on it with you. One of the things that kind of struck me, as I always have, is that we passed the budget based on this tax rate that we haven't passed yet. And so we're anticipating that, that this budget, well, it passed, and we're anticipating that the tax rate that is proposed here is going to pass as well. I, I know that the, the tax rate's gone down, and that sounds good, but your appraisal's skyrocketing, so the tax rate
Right, right.
Yes, yes, smoking mirrors. Uh, the, the no new revenue tax rate, I, I would support more than anything else. That would mean that we as commissioners, we as county, we as department heads would have to tighten up else a little bit, just like everyone else is doing, right? So where does it start? I, I think we ought to start somewhere, why not here? That's just my opinion.
Hear him.
One last comment, that, that was some of the frustration, is about the time I get back from coming and squawking, I open up the paper and I don't know who pointed fingers at, but are spending millions. And as soon as I saw that in the paper, I'm going, get ready, here it comes. And like you said, it's either going to be the property value or tax rate, I know how this works, we're going to give you a break on tax rate, but we're going to increase your value by fifty percent, and in the meantime, they're like, I, I always wondered, where the hell was money though? It's just one of those things, because then it never has come down to me. And so at my house, I do, I have so much money to spend, and I have to figure out whether I will ditch TV or can I not afford it? And that's a decision I have to make. I don't have the luxury of going out and saying, there's a guy on the street, why don't you pay my dish bill? I was stuck, me and TV or not, and that's kind of where I wish the county would at least consider, where's the money coming from the paper, what's you going to do, and is something we could hold off for a little bit?
We, we, we tried to take baby step several meetings ago by passing the, by freezing the county tax rate, which we can do. But it was thrown back on voters, and I would, I would really hope that the Republican Party would have got on board with this and really pushed this, as much as they pushed the other items that they're pushing. Uh, but if you're not sixty-five, you're going to be, hopefully. And I think that, I think it'll pass, but we need some folks out there to, to go to the polls and, and vote for that tax bill. That would be one baby step towards controlling the, the taxes this way.
I would also just make a comment, just in case you don't know, we set the tax rate here, your value is set by the appraisal district, which is a totally independent organization from us. And, and so therefore, we have, we, we don't have control over what they do. But I would also tell you that, what I tell everybody else, I would rather live in a county where the value of my house, which is the biggest investment for probably ninety percent of people sitting here, where the value of my house is going up and not going down, because it is your biggest asset. And, and so unfortunately or fortunately, we live in a county where people are moving into, which means supply and demand, and as the supply goes down, demand goes up, and the cost is going to go up with it, and, and we're all caught in that vacuum.
I'm, I'm right there with you. If I lived in Medina Lake on the river, up on the golf course, man, I'd be really on board. But for the, I don't know
Were you thinking on me?
I have no idea where you live.
I, I live on the river and the lake.
When you're living in a neighborhood that has fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty-year-old homes that are literally falling down, and you do go to the other taxing person, because that's what I first figured out our last one, it's a divided conqueror. I can't argue to you, as you say, it's this person, I come here and you all argue about me back over there. It's a very challenging system to work in when people are working twenty-four hours a day, it seems like. Two parents leaving their kids at home and stuff, it's hard to come over here and do this.
Sure.
Uh, and so that was one of them, is if you're right, I'd love to have my property go up, but going back to this is just a bad place to sit down. You know, when your house is here, your neighborhood is kind of here, it's odd how I cannot say, look at my neighbors and the yards, and yet the taxing entity can come over and say, let me go down three blocks and pull up this house and bring it over here and put it as your value. And even the real estate lady I spoke with, you and I both understand, my house is not going to sell for what I wish it would when I have this kind of neighbor around me.
Sure.
Uh, so anyway, thank y'all for your time.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I, there's a lot of smoke and mirrors, but I'm going to try to get you better at it and encourage folks as well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm bringing up just one point here. Uh, the budget with the tax rate that we have, raised one point five million dollars. Buying six police cars and deputies, not even counting the RSOs, is one million bucks. It's one million bucks. It's just, uh, you know, and, and if you look at, look at this, this is the biggest tax cut we have ever had in the history of Medina County.
Tax rate.
And it's gone, gone, tax rate, tax rate. And the thing is, like I said, talking about the pit that we're putting in, the people that are moving in, they want a gate, that's my biggest seller, they want a gate. They want the forty-foot wide streets. They want the curb and gutter, they want walking trails, that's a big one. They want houses big enough to where this COVID or whatever took place here that virtually sucked us under, to work at home. These people are spending six and eight hundred million dollars, a thousand dollars per house. That's where our revenue's coming from. It's just, uh, really, i- if you haven't been up the Tranca Road, please, if you can get chance, give me a call. I would love to take you through some of them sub-advantages. That's why we charge these people a pit, because they want stuff that the normal person didn't want. And I am not going to sit here and charge you, or you, or you for what they want. That's why we're setting up these pits. I got ten pits in my district right now, he probably has ten or more coming up. That's the only way we handle the growth. And get the quality, like Chris said, the quality of our housing in Medina County is going up. When they look at us on a map today, just going through what I read in the paper, we went up about fifty thousand dollars from a year ago, our house values. Thank Peter Flore for Senate Bill Two. Before that Senate Bill Two, every county in the state of Texas could go up eight percent. And I guarantee a bunch of them that last year went up seven percent. Today, we are maxed out, no matter what your house went up, we cannot go up over three point five percent. That's state law. No, I didn't say your appraisal, I said your tax rate cannot, yeah, the value of your house can't go up. Yeah, your outside property.
No, what are you saying, though, it's not smoke and mirrors.
It's not no smoke and mirrors.
We could have left it at fifty, fifty-two per hundred, but because of the law, it went down to forty-seven, there's no smoke and mirrors.
No smoke and mirrors in that one.
That is an actual tax.
The other entity does this, and the person who had, and maybe I encourage y'all to come down to the other side of the county to look at what's a little farther south.
I, I can assure you, Divine is fixing to come up on the next page, I've been working with Commissioner Beck. Divine's fixing to come up on the next page of, of rent.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, we'll hear from somebody else.
My name is Derek Prasher, I'm a council member.
Say.
Darren Prasher.
Darren.
A council member, been long, I'm a municipal county resident, I tell you. I invite my daughter-in-law and the young babies, and my wife.
Won't be hate babies, by the way.
Yeah, I would say, one reason why is I grew, participated, and I've owned a house for twenty years. I, to be back there, I remember that's college is crazy nowadays. But I have tried to pass on what my grandparents have given me, and my chances, to my kids. Twenty-five years old, and they live in a house that was built in nineteen twenty, okay? Not fancy, on twenty-seven pages. They want to build a nicer newer house. My son worked two weeks out of state, so he can make a good living to pay almost ninety thousand dollars in taxes. I ain't very darn good, I got none, I'm okay, you guys are okay. But what else do you love kids, and the benefit we pass on? It's time we have worked together, the city, the state, and all of us, to quit pushing over across the neighborhood, go get the taxing program. Because we're okay. But I would really appreciate, and I know you all do too, that one about generation, can't afford to pay their taxes and their provision of bills, and they had a great job, I'm telling you. You guys have a great job, and we paid ten, eleven, twelve thousand dollars to live in, in a, a, a hundred-story old house. Where do you go? It's free, it didn't cost us anything, and they struggle, not badly, but I'll say it's suffering. But where's you go when you're twenty-five, where can you get your fifty? We have to work together, and not say we're done, the tax coming down here, when they have their hearings. We need to start having some hearings together to say, hey, we're all in this together. It's not smoke and mirrors, it's just fact of life, we got bills we have to pay. But we got to figure out some way to keep the generation thing, but if we want to sell a house, that's fine, but I want my kitchen, I want to sell the house. My grandparents and y'all's grandparents, people worked hard with things we had. I live on subdivision land that was trusted to us to take care of. And if we have to eat more, or pay for less, or new cars, like I said, we tell you, then by God, we'll share a ride. We don't need an officer riding by himself driving down all day long. How about just give them a set of keys, and you're, you take the other one, you're off, the switch. But I'm okay, y'all are okay. I want my baby's kids. And I'm tired, when they come and they say, seventy-nine thousand dollars, I got twenty-five acres, how do I pay for that, that, that's so high? And I wasn't prepared. They got to pay that tax to lose their house. So people wonder, grandparents or parents, and everybody else, say, oh, well, we'll push on to somebody else. I and Natalia tell us the same thing, it's time to work together. It's the same thing, but let's don't lose because the value is low enough. I can care less about the sub or, I'm busy in the eye of houses. But I do care about people who love themselves too. Because I make money by buying some houses, but they're not going to sell. So I hope that when push people says, over here, over there, we're not going to give them. Because they're not going to make it, they're not going to make like you and I made it. But we made a good living, guys. There's no coming up, we go, these kids are trouble. They're in trouble with this tax rate, they're in trouble with property values, they're deep, and we're going to leave them, that's. And everything that you work for, and I work for, these guys are working, it's going to be gone in twenty years if we don't straighten this tax rate out, or the value. I can go to Seattle, I'll tell the state up there, get your Seattle taxes. Don't cover everybody three rockets, you can afford it. Because you're going to destroy them, our grandparents have had. Don't even, don't deserve to live nice too. But please help us, Natalia, Devon, the time being to come up with a solution. The government says, any entities are taxing individually. But E S Bs, the, the, fire department, they're not doing taxing, chief. But when you get the taxes, these guys are going to hurt, not me, not me, I would hurt, but share. Again, thank you all very much, and I just want to know is,
Yeah, thanks.
That you know, and I know, that are going to pay the consequences and lose their home one day. And we're not going to be here to see it and to help them. So I just ask, please, just try to do something to stop all the city taxes and all the county taxes that keep, we're on our own? No, we're in it together. So again, thank you all very much, I greatly appreciate it. And again, I'm going to thank you.
Thank you.
Darren, I appreciate everything you said, I agree with it. Uh, one of the ways that, one of the positive ways to look at it is eventually you'll own a million dollar home. But can you pay for it? If, if, if society today is, is having to cut their expenses and cut their extravagant living, by, by that I mean go on vacation. You know, then, then the taxing entities themselves ought to sit out and say, hey, can we, do we really need this, do we have to have that, can we cut back here? Like Judge Schuhart said earlier, we, we have increased our, our reserve funds to about twenty million, I think, for them. Uh, I think that if we were to cut back, we wouldn't get hurt. And give some sort of relief to the taxpayers. But again, it takes more than one.
Right, it does take us to the other, it's all, it's all, it's all, it's all, it's all, it's all, it's all. You've got to come together, as a county or a state or whatever it is, to say, taxing this can't be number four, that's what you think. Decide to put it up, sell it right now, because it's going crazy.
I bet you can't do it.
And with interest rates going up, it's not selling.
I know, I know, we all were sorry, we all knew. When we have not started coming together as a group, saying, well, we can't all just go to tax rate and, and go it out, because, you know. They're living in the single wide trailer house that they're living, you know, in travel trailers, or, or there, and you're paying large amount of taxes. It's crazy, you come in our neighborhood and you see them all day, come to our studio all times, take a green nineteen seventy-four trailer in here, and go, pull that out! It's different than casual, it's different than Honda, we're in different neighborhood. And we get to deny them, and then you see a little, a little different, and you look back at the county number, or the rest of them, and it's just, huh. You know, I suffer, and I've been there twenty years, like, oh, it's time that we have to say, can we live without that extra little car? Or can, what can we do differently in our savings account? How can we not just stay out? Because it's our problem too. But I know you all are aware, well, you all do a great job, and I don't know if they do it for it, but we do have to do something different, so put, point down fingers like, like we do. I was trying to raise, raise the value of it, but we still have, maybe I'm going to do it too. But we also have a question, is, well, let's just cut taxes.
We got to start somewhere.
So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Darren. Bruce?
I wasn't going to talk here, but I'm going to say this, Bruce Alzada, I, I live in Castroville. Couple things I want to say. I want to, I want to thank you for lowering the county's rate. There's too many just, uh, other taxing entities, even in Medina County, that are kind of halfway following the, the, the history of San Antonio. You know, in San Antonio, for twenty years, they preached they never raised the tax rate. They did, they raised the appraisals, which in, in fact lowers the tax rate, but they raised the tax rate back up to the same, so you don't get people. So by lowering the tax rate, I appreciate you. The problem is, the state law, the way the appraisals have to work. Years ago, we had another tax appraiser, they basically undervalued the properties for taxes. The county got in trouble, a new tax appraiser comes in, and the state law says the properties must be taxed at the market value of the property. The market value of properties have changed over the years due to those pits, due to those big developments. I told the tax appraisers one time, on a personal note, I, I, I've lived in my house for thirty-one years, I built my house thirty-one years ago, it's now being taxed at seven times what I paid for. Okay? Uh, I don't like that, it's, you look at my tax statement, the valuation is high, but yet they, they, for the last four years, they've been raising my valuation ten percent a year. No matter what, because it's market value. I told them before, I don't care, I don't care if my house is worthless. They looked at me and they said, what about your kids? I said, they hang with my kids, I raised them to be independent. If they're living their life for my house, then they're, they're wrong. They didn't follow what I wanted them to do. I told them before, tax the people that committed their values. Tax the people that flipped properties and marketed those, but leave the rest of us alone. But that's, that's your issue, that's a state issue with the way the state law is written on how property taxes are set. You guys deal with the county, I know what it is to find people, it's very difficult. Our costs have gone up draught, dramatically. Anyway, you can't even find people sometimes to pay. Uh, you look at the, the rates on any of our communities around here, Honda, Castroville, I'm sure Divine, the percentage increase, the adjustments in salaries, we have to just find people, all that costs money. Again, I applaud you for lowering the rate, okay? But it's just, you guys are the county, you have no control over the school districts, over the cities, over the E S Bs. Those, and you have absolutely no control over the appraisal district. They're following the state law. Okay? So my bottom line is, thank you for lowering it. And we, and again, I do agree, we all need to work together to try to reinvent some of the state laws in how tax appraisals and tax assessments are made.
I think you hit it on the head, Bruce, because the state of Texas sets those appraisal district rules.
Yes.
And that is their way of raising taxes on people, and they blame it on us. They blame it on the appraisal district, they tell the appraisal district, these are your parameters you've got to deal with. And, and, and the appraisal district has to follow that, or get slapped around by the state. So, so you know, your legislators are sitting there, and it's a little deceptive.
Yes.
The way they do it, because they then can get the school districts, which they paid forty-five percent of the school district cost, well, guess what? If they tell the appraisal district to raise the value of a house, state has to pay less then. Because more of it's coming out of your pockets in, in the part of the school district. So, so our legislators aren't clean hands here. They set that, they make it happen, we don't have a choice. The only thing we have, and I will just tell you all, in this budget, it's about a one point five million dollar deficit budget, all right? And, and for those of you that have been around here and paid attention, we always budget deficit. It's, this is probably the highest we've done, one point five million. And that's at the tax rate that, that the state says we can set. So think about one point five million, a million of it that, that went to the sheriff's office. A million, for the safety of, of, of the people around here. About a half a million or more went to raises, and, and I'll touch with what Bruce said. When you're competing with H E Bs paying eighteen dollars an hour for people to get their baskets in because they can't find people to work. And, and when we do our salary studies around here, which we've done, we try to keep our employees here competitive with everybody else around here, or we're not going to have employees. Because nobody wants to work, we have a real labor problem. So we have to keep our employees happy, and I think we've done a good job. Glenn, what do you think? I mean, we have very little turnover. Our sheriff's deputies, we had to raise, the jailers, gosh, we raised them a couple hundred thousand dollars because the sheriff can't find anybody to hire to work in a jail. And he's got to hire another fifteen more when that second phase comes in, and he can't find anybody that wants to work. So, so if we don't stay competitive with our employment, and if we don't offer our people here good salaries and benefits, well, guess what? Nobody's going to run the county, nobody will be working for the county, because they'll go to work. I, I could do H E B for eighteen dollars an hour, I'll bring those parts in all day long. But that's what's happening. So, so we have to maintain competitiveness. So when you say, we're one point five million to the deficit, let me just tell you, historically, this county has always come in, in the black. And that is because we have department heads, and, and I can tell you, two of T, every department head in this county comes in under budget. And, and, and we don't quibble with them about little things. If they ask for something, we assume they need it. But at the end of the day, we expect everybody to stay within their budget. So on a two, two point two million dollar budget, if everybody comes in at five percent under budget, we just picked up one point one million of that one point five I'm talking about. But no department head is coming in saying, I need more money, because they got enough. Am I correct? So, so we try to make sure everybody's got what they got. It's a one point five negative. Now, you lower the tax rate, it's going to be two million negative. At some point, yes, it's going to go away. We won't be in the black. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. Uh, one is, is that there's a, the statement that the state is the one who demands that the county charge taxes based on market value. From, from what I've seen, the state says that, that's not the case. So getting that, um, getting that, um, stipulation wherever it's published, I would like to do that.
Can you, can, I'm, I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
So I, for, uh, for several years now, I go and, and I, uh, I appeal my taxes every year. And they, they're, you know, so when I went there, they said, oh, well, we have to do it because the state says it. Well, you called us the state, you said, no, the counties are completely responsible for that. So if we can pin the, if we can pin down the black and white, I think that that idea could start to be able to determine what we're doing. The other thing is, is that coming under budget, that is an awesome thing. Well, that under budget, you know, however, you know, many millions of dollars, because right now it comes to twenty million dollars. So if that money is sitting in the bank, and with the, the current state of things, that that money will just be just, because they're going to be changing, they're going to be changing, because that's another story. However, if there is twenty million dollars in the bank that Medina County has, how do we get that back to the people? So that the people can pay their taxes, if it's sitting in the bank, what interest is it? That's the people's money, that's not the county's money, that's the people's money. How do we get it back to them? Is it earning more money? You know, is it earning more interest, and why are the people earning the interest from that money? How do we get that money back to the people? So, um, I certainly would like to see where the state demands that market value is used, and, and the fox is in the hen house, because they're the ones who set the market value. It's not just, it's, it's not just the market. Now, when we have people coming in from California or from New York, and they're selling their stuff, and they think, you know, that, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars for this house is, is just an awesome price. But we're still selling out to many people in the states. However, the two things that I want to bring up is, why don't we get that twenty million dollars back to the people? But it's a good thing that you guys are able to save money, you're budgeting, I'm budgeting. I've been, I've budgeted my family for many, many years, and I stayed in the black. So if that money that I stayed in the black would benefit my family. So if you're staying in the black, then let it benefit your family. Medina County is supposed to be a family, we're supposed to work together. Where's that twenty million dollars? Oh, I got twenty million dollars in there, I can't, but what's it doing for you? What's it doing with people?
You have to have reserves, and, and, and they have a rule of thumb, I mean, Bruce has a reserve, uh, I promise you, Natalia has a reserve. Every city, every government entity in the state of Texas has a reserve, because you've got to be able to operate as if you're not going to collect a dime for six months or so, or whatever that number is. We actually probably are at about eight months or nine, but, but there's a rule of thumb, and, and the, the requirement is that we keep money in reserves in case we ever need it. Uh, I was here when we had six million in, in reserves, and we were all pretty nervous during those timeframes.
So is that, is that the standard now, published for each of the cities? Is that posted so much, or that?
I think if you look at their budgets, they'll tell you, Edward just told you.
That's, that's twenty million dollars will carry us through the end of December, which is a couple of months, we'll be on the month revenue. So that will cover all the taxes, all the salaries through December, until we start collecting revenue from the U.S.
Okay, and so then, then that, that question has been answered temporarily. However, what about the market value, and the state says that they are not requiring?
I, I can just tell you, the rule is, I, I will, I don't have it off the top of my head, but, but the appraisal of your house, my house, and every other piece of property in this county, the rule is, what a willing buyer will pay a willing seller. And that's how you do market value, that is how they've been doing market value forever. And, and, and so the value on your house is, and I ask people, well, my, my price went up, you know, to four hundred thousand, the value of my house went up to four hundred thousand, and you know what my first question is, people is, would you sell it for that? And the answer is, no. And the, and my answer to them is, then it's too low.
I wouldn't sell my house for a million.
Then, then, then if,
I would not sell my house for a million.
I guess my point is, what a willing buyer will pay a willing seller is the definition of market value.
And so when I paid for my house, when I, when I went in to, to talk about my taxes the very first year, I told them what I paid for my house, and they said, oh, well, you didn't pay enough. They based my taxes on what they said that my house was valued at, not what I paid for it.
No, I,
That's the, that's the one.
And that's your, that's your argument with them.
That's the smoke and mirrors.
Yes.
Yes, that's the smoke and mirrors.
We probably need to move on, but,
I'm, I'm willing to do that, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Judge, can I ask a question?
You might, you might.
The appraisal district over here is an arm of the Texas Comptroller's Office.
That's correct.
Am I correct?
Yes.
It is not an arm of the county of Medina.
That's correct. It's got zone boards.
There's a difference between valuation of property and tax rate. They're tied together, yes, because one depends on the other, the setting of the rate. Depends on the valuations, but the valuations are not set by the county.
That's correct.
The valuation is set by the appraisal district, which is, and I wrote an article about this last year, that the appraisal district is an arm of the Texas Comptroller's Office. They belong to them, they are not a farm of the county.
That's correct.
So when you present these guys for valuations, I'm sorry, but I think that's important. Am I correct, Judge?
That's correct.
So this is the fox in the hen house saying?
We have no control over what the appraisal district does.
But with regard to valuations, it's not these guys, because they,
Well, I was, I was mentioning that, because I was trying to say that there, there was an issue here. And if the Texas comptroller is the one who's saying it, then they're not taking responsibility. So as, as, as a people, Medina County, would you, do they have a job to get it together?
I'll see if I can find you the answer.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
What I would like to do, Ms. Perkins, and, and I'm sorry, ma'am, I don't, I don't know your name. But, my, I'm sorry?
Amber.
Okay, well, Amber, I hate to call you by your first name, anyway. One of my next endeavors, I hope, is to get on the appraisal board, and I'm, and it comes down to the municipalities of Divine, Natalia, and school districts to nominate someone. I would like to be on there to get this information firsthand and find out who I need to go talk to. And usually these state reps, the state senators, they'll listen to a group of folks, but they won't listen to one person. So right around election time, which is coming up in what, fifty-six days, forty-seven, whatever it is, uh, they'll listen to you now, whether they do anything about it, it's, it's different. But that's, that's one of my, I wouldn't mind doing it, I wouldn't mind. I wouldn't mind sitting on the appraisal board number one to find out all the inner workings. Uh, I did go to one meeting and found out that they prepare their own budget, and, and I haven't seen it on our agenda to approve it yet. But, uh, we talked about that a little bit.
We did.
And, uh, it takes a certain number of, of entity, taxing entities to oppose their budget before they go in and redo it. I've seen it on our agendas before, but I haven't seen it this year. Or I don't even remember it last year. But if nobody opposes their budget, they go on about it. You know, and, uh, we pay like, what, twenty-six percent of their entire budget? They kind of operate however they want to. And, and I think that's, that's kind of scary in a way, and they need some sort of control over it. And to sit there and say, "Well, the state comptroller says we have to do this," but maybe you don't have it, or you're just... The, the legislature is trying, like Judge Schuhart said, they're trying to lower their part that they have to forward to the school district to fund them. And I think it's forty-five percent now, it's steadily going down. And they've been passing on the, uh, the increases in the, uh, in the cost to run these schools through unfunded mandates. So which basically says, "You will do this when you..." So something needs to happen. And, and I, I would, I've already talked to Mayor Bubba and, uh, the superintendent in Natalia and the city minister in Divine, and one of the school board members in Divine, and told them that I would, I would like to be considered for that position when it comes up. That's my only, uh, four A inch in politics after the next ninety-nine days.
Ms. Warrens?
I was just gonna try to answer that question. Uh, Comptroller's website, it's Texas Tax Code Section Twenty-three Point Oh-One requires taxable property to be appraised at market value as of January first of each catch.
Thank you.
And you just Google that. Thank you.
Look, she's not even working for us yet, and she's already paying dividends. So, thank you.
One, one other thing with the general fund we got, you know, we came up with election equipment a couple of years ago. We get all these unfunded mandates. Right now, we've got about a million and a half a year unfunded mandates that they send down to us, that here, you're gonna pay it. Election equipment since the last five years, we have spent about one point four million dollars on electric equipment. Come out of the general fund. Mr. Rowley's sitting over here one time, we helped him out about three hundred thousand. Then another one's coming up about five hundred thousand. That comes out of the general fund. We've got the Sheriff's Department sitting over there to upgrade all their radio stuff. We put radios on top of hills to cover the whole entire county. That was millions of dollars. That's why we need a general fund, to have a good, healthy balance in it. I've talked to some of these commissioners. We go to the schools. You go down to Galveston, the last hurricane they got, they're in debt for the rest of their life, ever. Nobody will ever get out of that, ever. It had totally broken. They didn't have no reserve funds. They were trying to piecemeal it each, little bit by little bit. But when you have something like that hit, it is, FEMA's not there, they won't pay for all your little stuff to keep you, get you back in business, keep you getting going back in business. You know, we're thankful we got a county today. When I got here, two years before that, the county was broke. Judge borrowed and took out every electric hot water heater we had in the county, everyone. There was no hot water. They were broke. The Sheriff's Department borrowed money from the road fund on two different occasions just to make payroll. The Sheriff's Department did. I don't wanna go back to them days again.
One of the things that we have done with reserves is, uh, we've included our, some reserve funds into the building of these, uh, new structures to take the tax burden, or, or take the possibility of an increase in taxes to pay for them. So we have used the reserves for something other than, you know, gaining interest.
It don't just sit there. The money just don't sit there. It is used, and thank God, they, the state tells us to try to keep about a fifty percent contingency fund. Like Chris said, we probably got eighty. But anyhow, that, that's all I've got.
We've probably spent forty million dollars since I've been here on buildings. Forty million dollars.
To pay for it.
And we still have, we've been able to grow our, our reserves to do that.
The healthy reserve is a, is probably the number one factor in getting an approval for a...
The bonds.
A bond rating that is required for us to borrow the money to build this facility, the jail. And, and that's a huge plus for the taxpayers, is having that lower bond.
This was my last comment. You know, to talk about reserves. What I'm hoping on this side here is, is when you say the reserve, most of the folks I'm talking to don't have a reserve. And so the tax coming to them is the hurricane, tornado, or devastation as they're trying to get their medical bills paid and, and just live on fixed income. And so that, I'm saying, maybe the county...
Okay. We are on, uh, unless there's somebody else, we will close the public hearing on, uh, the Medina County tax rate. Go to number thirty, discuss take possible action on adoption of the twenty-twenty-two Medina County tax rate.
I'll, I'll make the, go ahead, ma'am.
I'll move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point four seven four three, which is effectively a four point two two percent increase in the tax rate.
I have a motion. You have a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Is that twenty-nine, Amber?
No, that's just number twenty-nine. Twenty-nine, we'll get to thirty next. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Did you say aye? All right, so it passes three to one.
That was number thirty.
That was number, that was number thirty. Now, thirty-one, we're gonna open a public hearing to receive comment regarding the twenty-twenty-two precinct two special road tax rate. Uh, Ms. Tarvin, you signed up to talk. Do you still wanna talk?
Yeah.
Come on up. Come on up.
I have three minutes, so I will...
Well, we're on a public hearing right now, so, uh, so yeah.
I can talk longer. No, I won't.
We'll get that guy with a hook and pull you out, okay?
Now, this is the fourth time that I've been here. I wanna thank the commissioners and the judge, because I really feel that you are trying to do the best for Medina County. If y'all probably know, unless you haven't been here, in November, we will be able to vote on having the valuation of our property pros. Sixty-five and older will have the valuation of your property pros. And that is a big giant step, because yes, this tax rate is fine. It's the valuation that every year goes up different thousand or what have you. It's messing us up. But it's not their fault. But this, we're gonna talk about is precinct two special road tax rate. Six years ago, the people in precinct two voted to put in tax rate five cents per one hundred dollars of evaluation. And we had it, and I could come and ask that if you reduce to five cents per one hundred to four cents per one hundred, that would get it back down to about what we were paying that very first year. But all of our roads have been paved. I give Commissioner Sitteran A-plus on that. Years ago, we had all ground the roads. Every two years, we had to buy a new set of Michelin tires because the ground would chew them up. We don't have to do that anymore. And the funny is, what people may not realize, on January twentieth, twenty-one, uh, you know, our gas and gas bill was one fifty-nine a gallon for regular and one seventy-nine for diesel. And I think that tells the story of everything. Everything's blown up. It takes more money to fix the roads and what have you. But I am happy with all you will approve going from the five cents per minute to the four cents per hundred, because that would help, even if somebody missed a dollar to back that up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tarvin.
And I commend Larry and, and, and the folks who helped get that thing passed. Uh, it's good to have a dedicated fund for one purpose only, and it's worked out well.
Worked out well. I can tell you, I, I needed fifty names to get this thing on the ballot. She got seventy-five by herself. She got seventy-five names by her. She knows everybody on, on every road in Medina County. Thank you, Ms. Tarvin, so much for the help, and, uh, yes, we're gonna keep on paving roads.
Do we have anybody else here for the public hearing on the precinct two tax rate? Then we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, and we're gonna move on to, uh, item number thirty-two. Discuss take possible action on adoption of the twenty-twenty-two precinct two special road tax rate.
I will make the motion that we adopt the road tax at four cents.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have discuss take possible action on appointing an assistant tabulation supervisor.
Morning, gentlemen. Uh, last court, uh, conference court meeting, uh, y'all, the permanent manager and the tabulation supervisor. We're here, I'm here today to review all, to approve the assistant tabulation supervisor. That would be Chief Loria, in my office.
Thank you, Ms. Tarvin. You gonna, wanna make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion?
I'd like to ask a question.
Go ahead.
Did we already have these, uh, positions in place? I mean, are we just giving them names? We, we've always had them, always have. We just giving them official names? Okay, thank you.
Election code actually names them. We just have to follow the election code. All right, motion in a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have, thank you, Lupe. Are you next? Next, we have discuss take possible action on approval of updated list of judges submitted by Medina County Democratic Party for the twenty-twenty-two elections.
So, uh, the Democratic chair just, uh, updated or missed all judges and alternates, and that's the list that y'all have, and we're asking for y'all to approve.
Okay.
Basically, the same list, other than we'll be adding names.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the updated list of judges submitted by Medina County Democratic Party for twenty-twenty-two elections.
I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Want a discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, with the, um, I'll have to, uh, I'll have to put that aside a bit. I just forgot my point. I'm, I'm very sorry.
Happens to all of us.
I, yeah, I understand. Um, I, I do have a concern. Let me, let me look at, look at... Oh, poll judges. The, the list that is submitted, are they all for the Democratic and the Republican list? Are the, is the Democratic list all Democrats and all of the Republican list all Republicans?
Well, they're, they're submitted by the chair of each party. So I would hope that the chair is vetting them out before they put them on a list. That would be, I, I mean, Lupe doesn't necessarily vet them out, and I can just tell you from past history of thirty years of voting in Medina County, I know in times when I've walked in and a Republican person is actually working the Democratic side of it because they didn't have somebody to work it. And, and, and we've never had a problem because the party chairs are like, "This is an election." This is actually, whether you're Republican or Democrat, you should be doing the right thing, sitting there working election. But I can't tell you, he doesn't vet them.
My assumption, ma'am, is that, uh, if this Democratic chair commits them, and they're okay with them, I'm okay with them too.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so if the Republican...
Whether they're Democrat, Republican, independent, Green Party, whatever, if they're okay with them.
So there's no rule set that the Republican, that the Republican chair has to submit only Republican voters? And that the Democratic chair only has to, uh, to submit Democratic voters?
There's no rule that says that. It's up to them to submit who they want to submit. I don't think there's a written law. I think Lupe accepts whatever they give her, give him.
Right. I'm not saying that Lupe has anything to do with this. In fact, I thought Lupe was just standing up there because she's sick today, uh, and was unable to attend. So that was, that was my, my assumption, and that could, we know what Lupe does. But, so I just wanna make sure that the lists are provided. It doesn't matter whether they're Democratic or Republican that are on those lists for the judges.
We don't check them out.
We don't care, as long as they approve them.
Okay.
I don't care. I don't know about the other guy.
No, you're, you're a hundred percent right.
I wanted, I just wanted to understand that.
If Sandy Young submitted it, then we're gonna take Sandy Young's list. If Julie Clark submits them, we're gonna take Julie Clark's list. Go ahead.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the Democratic list.
Motion in a second. Did you second it?
Second.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, now we get to the good stuff. Discuss take possible action on a county-wide burn ban. Lift it?
It's a, it's another hot topic. It's currently in place.
I'm gonna miss this.
I had a little bit of a topic on me this morning.
Is it, is it currently in place?
Um, it actually expired last night officially. Um, I'm gonna recommend that we continue it. Unfortunately, we are really already going backwards from the range we had. We really need about another three or four inches to get us out of the real danger zone.
We're reaching that, of course.
Where's the rubber? The rubber?
We've been seeing some, uh...
We'll get that on our permit list.
Our, our, what we have now, we have a lot of good green growth that's coming up and is already starting to brown out. There's a lot of brown under it. We've had a couple of, so I mean, we're just right on the, right on the critical point. Since our rains, we have been allowing on a day-to-day basis, depending on humidity, winds, some of those. We've been doing half-day burns, no-day burns. We've been doing some all-day burns. So people call in, but I think we still need to keep a handle on it, because it will not be very long at all before we just...
This morning, there's no rain for ten days.
Well, I'll make the motion we renew it.
Motion in two seconds. Any other discussion?
Citizens can continue to call sheriff's dispatch if...
That is correct.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have discuss take possible action on approval of proposal amendment for the Motorola conversion of body-worn camera systems to cloud storage for the sheriff's office.
Okay, I am going to, um, actually, Chief, if you wanna just come up in case there's other questions on here. I'm gonna start out on the first page in just a little, a quick background. Started out, um, on a grant to purchase thirty body-worn cameras. And then in addition to that, getting body-worn cameras for our new patrol vehicles, which, as you know, we still don't have our seventeen vehicles that are, we're still waiting on equipment for. And one of the items that came up in that is actually that we cannot get the body cameras. They're still on backboard because of chips and all kinds of stuff. We cannot get them.
Chips right there?
Yeah, chips right there, different chips. So, um, in, inside of that, um, also we have, which has been an ongoing problem, we've looked at trying to get to cloud storage on a lot of things, because with all of these local servers we have, Microsoft goes and does updates on them, everything, what's working. Because at the local level, you don't know what Microsoft's doing, and it is just a mess. So it's kind of a part of a bigger plan, trying to get to, to cloud services. So they're managing all this stuff at the high level instead of us at the, at our level down here. Uh, so as we went through the process, the first thing that started this was that the, the new generation of body cameras that are available, um, was a very small difference between the old one they carry now that is getting ready to sunset. I mean, it is very close to the end of life, and...
Which is the ones we have right now.
The ones they currently use, yes, sir. And so we had those few issues going on, then we have the same problem. We can't get them for our E vehicles. So it starts us to look at this. Also, we were replacing thirty body cameras, and our entire fleet of body cameras was forty-one. So we're getting ready to do the majority of our cameras. We are about to do them in old technology. So we started to look at the entire project to see what it would take us to get us to the, to the current. And the, uh, current, also in this proposal, and I'll run through the spreadsheet, all the backups behind it here and the documents, um, that, uh, this also includes the new technology where all of this were uploading to the, straight to the cloud out of their vehicle. They stopped recording, and it starts uploading out of the vehicle and loading into the cloud service. So, um, if I'm just gonna run through the numbers with y'all, everything is color-coded in there on your spreadsheet. If it's green, it'll correspond to green in the stuff back behind it, what these numbers added to, and so on. So the very first item on there is there are forty-one total body cameras. This number includes five years unlimited cloud storage. So that's not only the cameras, that's all the storage for five years on there. Also, in that five-year period, there's one time at about the three-year mark where they actually send brand-new, forty-one brand-new body cameras out for the officers, and those get replaced. There's a refresh inside of this. So whatever the latest technology, whatever the latest software, all those things would be in that system. So that's forty-one total. Then if you go down the next item, and that's a hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars, basically our investment in body-worn cameras. Then there are seventeen, we have seventeen total, um, vehicles that are the new vehicles that we are waiting for. Those seventeen, this line is M-five-hundred, which is the latest and greatest in-car camera system. Those seventeen, this line is M500, which is the latest and greatest in-car camera system that uploads to the cloud and all those seventeen Tavos. And that cost is a hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars for all the equipment and the five years of storage, again. The next item, the, the, what you see in blue are thirty total vehicles that have, it's called Sierra Wireless, but it's a router, it's a modem. That's how all the information gets from the camera to the cloud. In addition to that, right now, all the guys have a rugged book or laptop in their vehicle. It has a SIM card in it, that's how it reaches out to the internet. This SIM card comes out and goes into this device that's in these costs, and so now the laptop, it just has better coverage. There's a home roof antenna and everything for LTE, so a lot better coverage. But that's a total of, um, uh, forty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-eight cents to get the thirty vehicles to where they can, uh, do that. The next item in yellow is we have thirteen, um, older Tavos still in stock, but they have a lot of life left in those. So these thirteen is to put a new cradle for their body camera into that unit because the old one won't fit in the cradle. So this is to rip, to replace the cradles in thirteen vehicles that we have. There's three thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And then thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and seventy-eight cents is the cloud storage for five years for those thirteen cars. In addition, on those thirteen, it requires a virtual upload appliance. Because of the old camera technology, this is part of what it takes to get that information to the cloud. The last, or in the, in the orange, that item is basically training and all the setup fees for it, which is six thousand, two hundred dollars. After that, you'll see below it, there is a body camera grant that we have been awarded, and the reimbursement for that, we get two, uh, twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred back. Then we had already purchased, I went back to Motorola because we have nine of the units that are sitting waiting to come to us. We purchased for this full amount, fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty dollars, we purchased nine kits to put the cameras into those cars. But I said, hey, will y'all give us full credit back for those so we can put the new camera systems in them? And they agreed to do that. So that's what the PO was for, fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. They took that off the quote to reimburse us, and we'll send those, uh, back to them. So the total cost for that is three hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-six cents. From there down, the spreadsheet was, I started going through the quotes, and I couldn't get my spreadsheet to add up. And I actually found a problem in the Motorola quote. They have fixed the tool, but if you go in here, you're gonna see higher numbers than three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Chief, if you don't mind what you give. Since we've been sitting here in the last hour, I, they got them corrected. My numbers were correct and theirs were wrong. I just bring that up because I will be right this evening when I get home. So I wanted to be right here this morning. But, um, yes, one of each, please. So all that is, is two of the quotes you have in there that they will match up to this three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. There was thirteen thousand, one of them was ten thousand, six sixty-eight off, and one was twenty-three hundred dollars. It was thirteen thousand, oh, thirty-nine, eighty-four that they were, that they were, um, off in the quote, and it was because of the way that, it was something with the tool. We worked on it until ten-thirty last night, um, but needed, but we got that part done. So that is it, uh, total of three hundred and, uh, sixteen thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars, seventy-six cents. And that is, um, for forty-one officers, that total, that actually, there's thirty-nine, that gives us two spares. So forty-one body cameras, that gives us thirty vehicles that have all the latest, um, I'm sorry, seventeen that have the latest, greatest cameras. Thirty of them are able to upload out of those, thirteen of them are the, still using the old cameras in the car. And then what there's, that leaves you eleven, that you want to wear the other eleven body cameras will, out of those, two of, uh, two of them are spares. And nine of them are one of two things, if the car, we have a few more than thirteen cars in stock, but if they had high miles on them, and we know we're gonna be into life thing in the next two years, we weren't gonna invest the money in putting this in there, it just didn't seem like it made good sense. So those cars will still load into the local service, server until over the next few years, we phase out of them. At that point, everything would be in the cloud, and then we could, uh, we could eliminate the server. So either they're high mileage cars, the other nine are, in some cases, we flat just have some, uh, uh, SRO vehicles, for example, that don't have video in them at all. So that's what, is it that nine number, a few more that are old vehicles, and then some that currently do not even have video in the car.
Okay, with that all being said, this is not part of y'all's budget, so this be at fifteen percent to come down to that twenty budget. That's how fast fifteen percent is in spirit.
So also, I think what you want to know, that-
Do we have a grant or anything on this?
So we don't have a lot of choice here because these are all body cams that are into life and the Sheriff needs them. Uh, the real question we came down to when we were talking about how to pay for it is, we got ARPA money. Uh, we could actually take this nine for this year and, and let Edward go and take it out of this year's budget because we got the money to do it. But Motorola actually will allow us, these are five-year clouds, so you, you write three hundred and sixteen thousand dollar check, that's pays for all of them for five years. But Motorola will let us stretch it out over five years at zero percent interest.
Got taken out.
And it's on the back page of the new-
And so, and Edward raised the budget that we just passed, he ra, happened to raise it for seventy-seven thousand to cover some of these costs, but if we stretch it out over, over the next five years, we'll pay seventy thousand before October one. He's already got in the next budget, the next seventy thousand. And so every year thereafter, we will-
It's, it's, at the end of the day, it's still a debt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just at zero percent interest, so, uh, so Debbie's over there making us two and a half percent interest on money, so we might as well keep our money. And, uh, and use it for the Christmas party or something.
Judge, I'm gonna let Edward interject because I know there's a little we need to pay for grants and stuff upfront, so we went over this this morning, I'll let him take over about the-
Go ahead.
So the only change from everything you said is that this year, this fiscal year before September thirty, we would have to pay a hundred and sixty thousand. And then beginning next year, I did increase the budget by seventy thousand, thinking we were gonna have to buy a five-year uh, plan for the six vehicles that we budgeted for next year. However, we're going to pay for one year, then that seventy thousand will take care of one year for those six vehicles, and then year two, everything that we're gonna take care of this fiscal year.
What's the one sixty?
So the one sixty is gonna include the, the first year subscription for these forty-one cameras, the thirty, uh, seventeen video cameras. However, we do have to at least pay the minimum of, of the grant, which is a twenty-seven thousand and a match for that. So it's gonna be increased slightly.
There's two pieces to it that are why we need to pay that much. One is the grant is required, we gotta pay the grant amount. And the second part is inside of here, there's, uh, two different things. One's called add for services, and add for services is where you buy the whole product, and it's in a bundle. And those are the things that we can put out over four years, but there's some other items in here for the Sierra Wireless, it's in blue on your deal, I think would be one of them. Those are not part of, from the Motorola product, and those have to be paid as a, like an upfront deal. So those numbers are coming out of, that's where the numbers are coming from, either grant requirement or it's not adds a service, and it's gotta be paid in an upfront cost, and then they bill the rest of it. And that's on the bottom, you can get a, a feel for that on this last page of those quotes, it shows you here what had to be paid upfront on the quote.
Questions? Any more?
Just, I don't know if this is gonna help. The reason why it's costing it this much, we have a vehicle just for the equipment and store everything in the servers now. We're being told that both servers have, and are mine. Or what, five-one, twenty-five thousand, that's a fair minimum. Over a couple of years, we'll probably have to buy another server, so.
It's about thirty thousand, but also I think the, uh, server crashes on a regular basis.
Yes sir.
So, I mean, our servers, we are all trying to move to the cloud on as much as we can. This will be one of our first ones. Odyssey's already on the cloud, uh, which is the court management system. And, but we're trying to get as much over to the cloud, just because we have twenty-seven servers in this county. And, and they're all gonna be on end of life ultimately, and if we just keep buying servers that keep having to be replaced, and our goal is to up the technology, we're just very slow at doing it.
And it's very costly.
It is costly, but it works. So, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the proposal, we may want Motorola to-
I'll second that.
Motion in a second, any other discussion?
Do we need to include to pay it out over five years?
Uh, yeah. As amended, pay it over five years?
Pay it over five years.
I'll second that.
Alright, motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank y'all. Next we have discuss take possible action on approving the participating entity services agreement for statewide automated victim notification service. This is just a renewal of a grant for the Savins Grant for the Sheriff.
I will make a motion to renew that grant with the service energy agreement statewide.
Alright, motion, second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next we have discuss take possible action on approval of Tiger Technologies Quote Number Two Zero Two Two Three Five Four Three Seven One and more for an additional seven mobile licenses for the Sheriff's Office.
I will make that motion.
Motion, second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next we have discuss take possible- What the?
What was that, burned up?
I don't know what that was.
That was your-
Anyway, next we have discuss take possible action on acceptance of an award for seal bids for the office remodel for fifteen oh eight Avenue, uh, M and Honda. This is the extension office. As y'all recall, we're going to take that out of the ARPA funds. And this will remodel Debbie's old office to make it into a place for the extension office to do cooking and demonstrations and four-H, FFA, and all the, the kids. So, uh, the, the low bidder was, where's the low bidder? Oh, it's on the backside. There's two bids. Alright. This is, the one seventy-six is not the bid we're accepting. There's another one for one-
One eighteen?
Where is it?
It's two and nine, the second.
Oh, it's here?
Yeah, three sixteen remodeling.
Oh, okay, alright, three sixteen remodeling company, there we go.
Uh, I'll make the motion to accept an award to bid to three sixteen remodeling.
Second.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next we have discuss to take possible action on acceptance and award of seal bids for the parking lot located at the southwest corner of Avenue M and Fourteenth Street. That is the parking lot right across the street by the DA's office, that property that we own. We finally, after months, got approval for everything from the city for everything to be done. We went out for bids, and only Wayne Rogers Construction bid it. Again, that's money that's coming out of ARPA, right? That's ARPA money too, right?
I'll make the motion to accept an award to bid to Wayne Rogers Construction.
Second.
Motion in a second, any other discussion?
Yeah, there is some discussion. He bid all of our county work, does he have to bid that?
Uh, it's a parking lot, I think it's-
Yeah, he, he, he did, he did go out for, he is our contractor to do all the county work.
That, that was for paving roads, I don't think they-
Pretty much what this is.
It's a parking lot.
Yeah, pretty much what it is.
I think we probably, it's probably description-wise doesn't quite fall in to what we awarded him to do on the road. So I think we, because this has got-
Yeah.
It's, it's a parking lot, it's got, uh, curbs, everything, so, uh, so I think we have to in the future all-
Good enough.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, sir.
I would just interject also, uh, I went out, you know, a few months ago and actually got a quote, trying to hit a quote on the deal, and that's when we figured out it was going to be more than what we thought. And his quote, we did a little bit of, uh, edit changes afterwards on the curbing around it, uh, to help reduce the cost a little, but then there was also like landscape rock and stuff that was added into it. Bottom line is, his quote is less than what the original was. So just a little, it's-
Perfect.
Mr. Motion, I have a second.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Except Wayne Rogers' bid. Is that good enough?
You got it.
Okay.
Second, over there. Motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Bobby Joe, finally.
Come on, buddy.
Discuss take possible action on approval of fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget for nine-one-one, and the good news is that he's not asking for any more money, right Bobby Joe?
Alright.
Same amount of money, operational, everything's good at nine-one-one? So, do we have the, uh, you know, years ago, we bought all new equipment, is that stuff now aged out, you gotta buy more? Is that what happens?
That's what we're doing in Grantland.
Grantland, perfect. Good.
I have a request, which may cause him to up his budget a little.
No, too late.
Years ago, you did a compilation of miles per precinct of roads? I'd sure like to have that again. That's what I thought. With the new, I mean, it's gonna be good for ten years, with the redistricting, you only have to do it once every ten years.
I've gotta find it first, that's a program in access. They've even changed access now to the new, I don't know if I can even program it again.
Surely there's a new and updated way to do it, that you can just-
Dave, I wonder, I wonder if it's the new precinct system we have?
We've got all those.
That new precinct system we have?
All alone.
I'll have to go and do it.
Okay.
Okay. So, so does your motion depend upon his answer?
No, just my vote.
Yes, your vote.
I will look at it, see if we can put anything together.
Alright, so do we have a motion to approve the nine-one-one budget?
I'll make it.
Thank you. Motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Bobby Joe, you're good for another year. Next we have discuss take possible action on approval of Sheriff and Constable's fees. They're, they're in front of you. Uh, pretty much unchanged, right Jennifer?
Nothing changed.
Alright.
I will make that motion, can we approve it?
Uh-oh.
Double it up, brother.
Gilbert.
Double it. Bring us some money.
I'm trying, Judge. So we did a search on five counties surrounding us, the Al, Andere, Kerr, Creo, and Atascosa County.
Atascosa.
Yes. The only, we're pretty much up there with them, the only ones that we're not pretty much on board are the Ridd of Garnishment. We charge thirty dollars, Medina County does. Everyone else charges anywhere between one hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars.
Hmm.
So what do you want?
So you want to change that to one fifty?
Sure.
So, so, did anybody want to make that motion and, and amend it?
I will make that motion to amend it to one fifty for the rent, wits of-
Ridd of garnishment.
The hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Motion in a second.
What's a Ridd of garnishment?
That is, uh,
That little, little green stuff.
It's kinda like when you owe, when you owe money, a judgment against you, maybe you're not paying your child support, or something like that. They take out a Ridd of garnishment, and it goes to the bank, and the bank makes sure you never see it, it goes straight to whoever. That is a Ridd of garnishment. Very unpopular amongst people that have bank accounts, just so you know. Okay, we have a motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, huh?
Was that it? You had two others.
Right, there was two others.
Oh, wait, you got, well, let's, let's go back. Undo that motion.
Again, subpoenas, we charge one hundred dollars. The others charge about one twenty-five to one fifty. Summons, one hundred dollars is charged by our county, other counties are up to one twenty-five. So I think we're right in, in the ballpark in those.
So, just make those, do it again. Let's, anything else before we make this motion?
No, sir, that'll be it.
Alright.
I will make a motion that we raise the subpoenas up to one fifty. Summons up to one twenty-five from one hundred, and the written wits from thirty to one fifty.
Second.
And accept everything else as written. Alright, motion in a second. Now are we good?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Chief. Next we have, last page, folks, we're getting there. This is almost gonna be a record length. Discuss take possible action on approval of increasing the hourly rate, we already done that. Next we have discuss take possible action on setting regular Commissioners Court meeting dates for the fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three.
For that.
It, oh, on the back. Oh, there it is.
Trying to say paper.
Alright, is it every other week, I assume? Except for twenty, October, this October, we have a change because y'all are all in school, and I'm gonna go watch A and M play Alabama, so, uh, important stuff.
Let me ask you a question.
About A and M and Alabama?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay.
Are you going to get your longevity check next year? Are you going to get your longevity check next year?
I don't know, do I get one?
You get probation when you leave, on the 31st, 32nd.
So I'll get three months, whatever. You get three months too?
No, I was just concerned...
Or did you want my check? I don't know, I, that's a good question, I...
But let's bring up for Christmas.
Never thought about it, so, uh...
Never mind.
All right, so...
Okay, the question is, we do this every year, I would like to bring up, what are we gonna do on December twenty-ninth?
We're gonna do what we do every year, Debbie's gonna tell us, we're gonna be okay and we don't have to come.
So we're gonna leave it up a, a, at the last minute type, kind of?
Well, Jennifer's gonna put it on the December first agenda to talk about it because we will probably do what we do every year, and that is, uh, not come that day.
Okay, well, we'll leave everything on this and we'll wait till due time?
January eleventh.
If January one, you won't be here, and I gotta be here for it getting installed.
I'll be here to install you.
Oh, okay.
No, actually, I'm gonna be here to install him, he's gonna install you, so we'll be fine.
Okay.
Okay. I'm gonna motion to reset the regular commissioner's court meeting dates as presented.
Second.
Second, third. Motion, second, third, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have discuss take possible action on designating a commissioner to chair the meeting in the county judge's absence.
I'll move to appoint David.
Here we go. Do I have a motion in a second to appoint David as the backup chair in meetings in the judge's absence?
No rebuttal, no discussion, no...
All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. There you go, you're in. Next, we have discuss take possible action on, on granting approval of extension of submission of emergency services district number one financial report.
I will make that motion, we extend it, I'm not gonna go through the whole hall of Texas, y'all wanna read Polly's Texas, I don't wanna have to read them yet, we're gonna extend it, and they're, we're gonna vote in the new, uh, we're gonna...
Wait, wait, right now, let's, let's vote to extend it, and the chief's gonna call Polly as soon as we get through and say we didn't extend it, okay? Just for fun, just need to, we need to, we need to jerk the chain a little bit. I have a motion?
Tell her I didn't do it.
Second, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have discussed a possible action on reinstatement of president and treasurer for emergencies district number one.
And I will make that motion.
Who are they?
Uh, let's see, it's President Marvin Juig and Terry Beck.
Treasurer?
Trevor.
Yes.
Okay.
Whoever was that, I'm not sure who was that this year.
All right, President Marvin Juig, treasurer, Terry Beck. Motion, second, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion passes.
No relation.
No relation, no, no relation to your, your...
That's Terry Beck.
Terry Beck, as in, there's several Terry Beck's, one's a female Terry Beck and one's a male, this is the male Terry Beck.
So, T-R-O.
T-R-O-Y. Do you wanna how to spell Beck? Do you know how to spell Beck? Okay, yes, sir?
I think for just clarification purposes, it wouldn't be the, uh, it wouldn't be y'all's responsibility to appoint positions other than names.
Okay.
Because in the state, or in chapter seven-seven-five, they would elect their positions within their...
Okay.
If that makes sense.
So what are we doing here?
You should be reappointing Terry Beck and Marvin Juig to the board of emergency services.
To the board?
To the board.
To the board.
All right, so we are reinstating, well, it, we'll just say Terry and Marvin to the emergency services district number one. All right, that's the motion?
That's it.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion passes, next we have discuss take possible action on authorization to advertise for public hearing to reduce the speed limit on County Road four-four-three, locating precincts one and three.
Yeah, this cemetery road, uh, we're gonna re, reconstruct that whole road, and there is no speed limit, so we need to post the speed limit.
These are gonna close, why do you keep letting them go forward?
Because there's not a speed limit on it at all.
And Ms. Perkins? Huh?
I thought it was fifty-five.
It's, I don't think it's posted.
Just you cross roads from, uh, twenty-six, seventy-six, you know, that you get a fifty-five speed limit and then you cross one-seventy-three, so the assumption is that's still one, that's still fifty-five.
That, that's why we're reducing the speed limit.
It's a, it's a different road. It's not continuation of twenty-six, seventy-six, so it's a county road at that point, and this is not posted, the speed limit is sixty-five.
And Ms. Perkins, you probably wanna make sure, keep, put a post up on Facebook, October third, that road's gonna be closed for how many months?
We've, we figured just two months, because we got Culver Street base, we got other stuff we got, it's gonna be a whole big process.
Cemetery Road?
Cemetery Road.
From, from right here on Avenue M?
Some extended, twenty-six, seventy-six.
No, it's not. But you just need to know it's, it's, the papers should probably let everybody know it's gonna be closed.
Yes, we have it, we have it, gonna be in there.
From the 10th, then?
We're gonna start October third, and we just figure two months, just to give a taste, depending on weather, any circumstances may come up, just to cover our bases.
Okay.
Okay.
The speed limit, I'm sorry, what were you reducing it to?
We're just advertising for public...
We're gonna advertise for public hearing right now.
Sorry.
That'll be on the next agenda, uh, the next meeting. Okay, we have no change orders, and now we have court member announcements.
Forty-eight didn't finish.
What'd I do?
I just got a note.
We, motion, did we have a second? Do I have a second? Second, heard it now, all in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Next, we're having a change orders, now court member announcements.
Uh, yeah, we just got done working in Earl Canyon subdivision, we just did nineteen pole sacks in three days, uh, we are gonna start a project on New Fountain Road, we're just gonna take some time, uh, that's gonna be a major project between City of Honda and precinct three and precinct one.
Good enough. Uh, we're right in the middle of hauling about six thousand cubic yards of rat material, that's a recycled asphalt off of two-eleven and Highway ninety, and it's all going to outside the city of La Crosse, and I have another road that hadn't been paved up for five-sixty-two along the railroad track, and we're gonna wind up paving about, I'll have one mile of road paved after next week in precinct two, and then we're gonna start grinding up the old roads, that, since we put in new roads, it made the roads that looked kinda good, bad.